It is seven. Emily, are we ready back there? Okay, all right. It is 7:00 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person, in consideration of ongoing COVID-19 health concerns, we are also offering the option for the public to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the City Council calendar item listed on the front page of missionks.org. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Emily, will you please call the roll?
Pauline Hough.
Here.
Inman.
Here.
Loudon.
Here.
Reiner.
Ahn.
Here.
Here. All right, our first item on the agenda is public hearings. Tonight, we do have a public hearing on a request for a waiver of Section 320.020 of the Mission Municipal Code to park a camping trailer at 6190 West 52nd Street. First, I will open the public hearing, call on staff and the applicant to make a presentation, and then the council will hear any comments from the public. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the City Council will have an opportunity to discuss the information presented and consider a resolution granting the waiver. The public hearing on the request for a waiver of Section 320.020 of the Mission Municipal Code to park a camping trailer at 6190 West 52nd Street is now open. Mr. Scott, will you please provide a report to the council? Yeah, can we return after we see if there are any? Should we have public comment before asking any questions of the applicant? Laura, which would be the proper order? Or, okay. Yeah, so is there, thank you, is there any member of the public present this evening who would like to comment on this issue? If so, please come to the podium and clearly state your name and city of residence for the record. Emily, anyone online? No one? All right, that will then close the public hearing. So the City Council discussion will now proceed. Do I have a motion? Oh yes, Ken?
I actually had questions before making a motion. I didn't know if that would be in order.
Can we, can we put the motion out and then ask questions to the applicant?
Mayor, I move that the City Council approve the resolution granting a waiver of Section 320.2020 of the Mission Municipal Code for a period of one year allowing the applicant to store one pop-up camper trailer, approximately 12 feet long by eight feet wide by four feet tall, when enclosed in the side yard of 6190 West 52nd Street, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the subject camper trailer will be kept in working order and usable condition at all times. Number two, registration and license of the subject camper trailer shall be maintained at all times. Number three, the subject camper trailer will be stored in a neat and orderly manner directly adjacent to the garage with nothing stacked on top or underneath or next to it.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any council discussion or questions on this item?
Yes, Mr. Younger, could you tell me whether you've looked into off-site storage? Okay, thank you.
Yes, Kristen?
So, um, you do have some.
Does the size of the camper fit in the garage? Is that because of things in the garage or is it just too big for the garage? Things in the garage? Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? Yes, Debbie?
I would just ask prior to the public hearing, have any neighbors called the city about a concern that has not been addressed here tonight?
Let Brian address that. Thank you. Any further questions? Emily, please call for the roll.
Pauline Hough. Pauline Hough.
Nay, and my reason for that is I don't like the precedent that this sets.
Aye.
Day.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have special presentations. First is our Arbor Day Poster Contest winner presentation, which is in recognition of the 2022 Arbor Day Poster Contest winner from Rushton Elementary School. Mr. Almaney, will you please come forward to share your presentation? And if Jackie, I do see Jackie in the audience, if she wanted to join you, I'm not sure, but.
So each year. So each year, Rushton Elementary, fifth graders participate in a poster contest that's sponsored by the Kansas Forest Service and in partnership with the Mission Parks and Recreation and Tree Commission. The poster contest began over 15 years ago to spread awareness about Arbor Day and social benefits. And the contest is themed each and every year and encourages fifth graders to apply what they've learned about these trees. This year's theme was "We All Make Kansas Trees for Resilient Ecosystems." So this point, I put to the bike Claire Pogie to the podium. So Rushton Elementary had 51 participants in this year's poster contest. And the community voted Claire Pogie as the 2022 Mission Poster Contest winner. Congratulations to Claire for her creativity and for making Mission clear.
And Claire, you don't have to, but if you want to tell us anything about your poster, you can feel free. Nope, all good, all good. Well, congratulations to Claire, and I would like to thank all of the students who entered the contest this year and the Rushton staff who we enjoy partnering with for our annual Arbor Day events. All right, we're going to jump around a little bit on our proclamations because we have one other guest in our audience. So we will go to our proclamation recognizing June 10th, 2022, as Mark 50 Forward Day. For half a century, local governments in the Kansas City region have come together through the Mid-America Regional Council, or MARK, to partner on regional initiatives and develop innovative solutions. MARK has created and supports an environment in which local leaders may engage and inform decision-making through insightful data analysis and participate in problem-solving forums to positively impact progress throughout the region. MARK is guided by the core values of integrity, innovation, collaboration, diversity, inclusion, excellence in performance, and service leadership. Mission has benefited from working with MARK across boundaries, allowing us to better serve our residents, and we are proud to celebrate the collaborative work that's been accomplished over the past 50 years and look forward to the continued progress the region will enjoy for decades to come. Marlene Nagels of MARK is with us here tonight to accept this proclamation. Marlene, would you like to make any comments? If so, please come up to the podium. Thank you. All right, our next presentation is a proclamation recognizing May as Building Safety Month in the city of Mission. Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role the largely unknown guardians of public safety within our communities are local code officials. These are the people who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to the health and economic vitality of Mission. The theme for Building Safety Month 2022, "Safety for All: Building Codes in Action", encourages us all to raise awareness about planning for safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities in building safety, energy conservation, and creating a safe and abundant water supply to all of our benefit. Mission is pleased to observe Building Safety Month, asking our residents to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investments at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided by local and state building departments, by our prevention bureaus and federal agencies, and protecting lives and property. Mr. Scott, would you please come forward to accept the proclamation? I'm sure he appreciates it. All right, next we have a proclamation recognizing May 15th to May 21st, 2022, as National Police Week. Each May, our nation slutes the men and women who put their lives on the line every day to maintain public safety. On Peace Officers Memorial Day and during Police Week, we not only mourn the heroes taken from us because they chose to serve, we also recognize all who have dedicated their lives to this important work. Our law enforcement officers have tough jobs, regularly working in dangerous and difficult, highly tense situations, often facing challenges that are deeply rooted in systemic problems and broader social issues. Mission is committed to ensuring our dedicated police officers receive the support and recognition they have earned. Chief Madden, would you please come forward to accept the proclamation and pass along the council's thanks and appreciation for the work the men and women of the Mission Police Department do every day? Thank you. And our final proclamation is that May 15th to the 21st, 2022, is also National Public Works Week, which we are recognizing with a proclamation as well. Public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital to creating sustainable and resilient communities and to the high quality of life and well-being of our Mission residents. These dedicated professionals are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting important infrastructure facilities that are essential for our community. 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And Mission joins APWA officials in urging all citizens to pay tribute to our public work staff and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life. Mr. Ann, will you please accept this proclamation for your department and pass along the council's appreciation to your staff for their dedication and commitment to serving the residents and businesses of Mission? All right, next on our agenda would be the issuance of notes and bonds. We do not have any items related to the issuance of notes and bonds this evening, so we will move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has five items tonight. Our council committees met on May 4th and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Emily, please call the roll.
Davis.
Aye.
Reiner. Aye. Chosey. Thomas. Inman.
Aye.
Crane. Aye. Loudon.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Our next agenda item is public comments. If many, any members of the public would like to make a comment tonight on items not included on the agenda, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak, and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember that your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand, but stay seated, and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Do we have any comments? Seeing none, we will move on to our action items. First, we do have one item coming forward from the Planning Commission, which is the approval of a preliminary and final plat for Barclay Corner at 6780 Johnson Drive. Mr. Scott, or rather, Carrie, will you please provide your report?
This is case 2210, Barclay Corner, preliminary and final plat. The subject property, a fast-paced drive-through and dining establishment, is located at 6780 Johnson Drive on the north east corner of Johnson Drive and Barclay Street. The applicant planned restoration of the city for renovation to the existing building's interior and exterior facade. Formerly used as C1 restricted business district and lies in the west streetway home base. The building's facade faces Johnson Drive to the south, with the drive-through and walk-by seeking west toward Barclay Street. The property that consists of 31 stalls, including two eight-mix stalls, situated on the west, northern, and east sides of the building, with primary ingress and egress on Johnson Drive. Secondary access to the site is approximately 175 feet north on Barclay Street. The property's full sign currently exists on the south side of the site on Johnson Drive. Surrounding the subject property, a former zone of use. On the west side, C2, planned general business district. On the east, and that's a commercial use. On the east, C1 restricted business district, commercial use, and R1 single managers' division. On the north side, C1 restricted business district. All of this is provided there. The south, and on the south, C2, planned retail and service district. Waterman and property operated by Waterline runs east and west on the property, approximately nine feet behind the edge of Johnson Drive. Stormwater is collected in the inlets on the southeast corner of the property, Johnson Drive in the southwest, and on the southwest on Barclay Street, where stormwater drains, stormwater pipe running parallel to the water. There's also a stormwater pipe running south on the eastern border of the property, approximately four feet from the water line. Under that, overhead, almost eight feet of the structure. The property was not platted during its initial development. They requested that a preliminary and final plat be submitted with a site permit for pre-gets on the exterior and interior renovations. If a break-in of that will be reported on Johnson Drive. Currently, sidewalk on Johnson Drive and sidewalk on Barclay Street are city-owned, of plans to play except for a small corner and southwest portion of the property. City plans to make improvements provided by a long Johnson Drive feature. So, a platted again, but the permission right away. So, a plating in the sidewalk at the time of the project. The proposed plat that exceeds nine feet of break-in to the city admission would be implemented to the property's requirements. The reasons proposed in the plat are areas dedicated for access to electrical utility, stormwater, and total water supply. Love units are 10 feet wide in the center. And electrical utility runs from the main by east of the building and stormwater runs entirely from the property. Non-CP1, the commission uses the miserable code, requires a minimum 15-foot impact on which to slow buildings. There's no side over your garden requirement, strictly the most required. Generally, under Section 455-100 of the Mission's code, subdivision at the time of the actual construction. That good best planning practices are followed, efficient use of natural assets, and just keep off of typography, shall be routine for. Give up the mention's investigations are important to the purpose of the project. All requirements of the question, who's, according to Section 127, may have lots of room. And all the permits of the mission needs to be done up for the 26th. So, with the final plat, Mission. The committee commissioned approved the preliminary and final plat at April 25th, 2012. and twenty-two. They recommended approval.
Thank you, do we have any questions for Carrie? Not, I would entertain a motion? We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Emily, please call for the roll.
Aye.
Crane.
Davis.
Aye.
Reiner.
Thomas.
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. We will now move on to our committee reports. Councilmember Crane, will you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee?
I will, thank you, Mayor. My, my is not working, so I'm not loud enough. Okay, all right, thank you, Mayor. The Finance and Administration Committee met on May fourth and considered four items. The meeting minutes, young life special event permit, and Mill Haven HOA picnic were approved under the consent agenda. The adoption of the two thousand and twenty-one annual audit will be considered here under this agenda. Presentation and adoption of the F Y two thousand and twenty-one audit. Kansas statutes require an annual audit of the city's financial statements. The audit for the two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year was conducted by B T and Company. The auditors worked in conjunction with city staff to prepare and audit the comprehensive financial statements of the city admission. The audit includes examining on a test basis evidence supporting the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements, assessing the accounting principles used and significant estimates made by management, as well as an evaluation of the overall basic financial statement presentation. The city received a clean or unqualified audit for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Staff is to be commended for their work, not only in preparing the annual audit, but for the attention to sound financial management practices throughout the year which result in favorable audit findings. Therefore, Mayor, I move the city council accept the audited financial statements for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion on the item?
I just want to commend staff. Staff comes through every year when we get these audits. It's such a blessing to look down and find out how great our city's doing because we have the best staff in the county.
All right, any, I would entertain a motion? Did we already, we have a motion, sorry, please call for the roll. Lucy, my mind.
Aye.
Chosey.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Loudon.
Aye.
Reiner.
Aye.
And does that conclude your report?
That's my report, Mayor, thank you.
All right, and then now we will move on to our other committee report. Councilmember Boltinghouse, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Yes, Ken?
I just want to say thank you. I think that the folks in Ward Four will appreciate the sixty-first terrace being added to the, to this project, so thank you very much.
Right, seeing no further discussion, Emily, please call for the roll.
Chosey.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Loudon.
Reiner.
Davis.
Aye.
Thomas.
Item seven C is a contractor award, Johnson Drive Rebootition Project. The Johnson Drive Memorial Avenue Road, after the street real-located cars project, is a point project, bolt park, mission for raising signals. The proposed improvement seeking fast surface street length, stretching to a three-point inch section for NOL, able to immediately repair its spot replacement. And decorative asphalt paper sidewalk would replace the concrete requirements for NOL to pay. Additionally, the improvements equipment, five foot white siding, on the north side of Johnson Drive, in the parks. This will break the wall gravitations by beating the crossload pressure. Two bits were received on November twenty-sixth, back in eighteen construction. House of Women, the construction. Over the second, the engineers asked, additional for the person, three hundred percent, bolt turn, or process. The loading structure, inside the park, is possible. Estating five hundred forty-nine thousand. And third classes, and there's a leak, see. Currently estimated. Mayor, the city council, not giving any discretion, but discretion, yes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Emily, please call for the vote.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Loudon.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Chosey.
Crane.
Thomas.
Reiner.
Aye.
Item seven, twenty-three, twenty-four, seven-five, cars for. Government state gap that solves townshipal hunger. Part of the brand provides funds to the city, drive and maintain for. Each year, cities submit a five-year review program, in which projects are selected for funding. Cities are responsible for design, driveway, and utility position. New cities require a pass resolution adopting five-year policy. Cars projects are ultimately. Seven, eight, or point two-three, point seven cars program, simply similar to twenty-twenty twenty-six. With the exception of the sixty-third street, from NOL to Rose project. This project is drafted in twenty-twenty-five, based on paper. Direct information. The NOL having priority for our waste being six meters. The completed state, tell improvement search history, in the rough, the five-year program, both. Mayor, I move the city council approve the resolution adopting five-year same test.
Right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on this item? Yes, Debbie?
I just have a comment. This is a second item we've had to have, where we've had coordination with another city here, and I think that's beneficial for us, term length wisely and coordinated with one.
Any other comments? Right, seeing none, Emily, please call the roll.
Davis.
Aye.
Reiner.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Inman. Aye.
Chosey.
Aye.
The final item this evening is item seven E, for clarifying training needs, micro revolutionizing. Carson Recreation Stat, for the mission, municipal project, two thirty and two forty, Dr. C permission. During the two thousand and twenty-one inspection ground, ability. After developing a list of objectives through service, especially in heat. Work interview was included by thirteen something, consultation with Mark, a review by chief, and a power. Staff is recommended to adopt new proposed orders to proper training. Respond to a free submit, recreational mode. Allow flexibility. Mayor, I move the city council, providing certain sections, you guys, to be creation, and section three oh five, zero. Skateboards, road lanes, road states, for a big.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on this item? Yes, Ben?
I just wanted to take some time, we'll thank everybody that put a lot of work into this. A lot of folks on the P R T Commission worked hard on it. Parks and Rec Director, and Almany, Chief Madden, thank you for your input on that. A lot of help from Mark and Wipeout KC, lots of review from the. Thanks to everybody for.
Any further comments? Emily, please call for the roll.
Davis.
Aye.
Reiner.
Loudon.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Chosey. Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Great. All right, next would be unfinished business. We do not have any unfinished business on our agenda this evening for, under new business. We do have two new business items for consideration tonight. Ms. Smith, will you please update us on the first item, which is ratification of an emergency expenditure for design for repairs to Rock Creek Channel?
So, I think you all are aware that there's a provision for the section which allows me to proceed with the merger to expand the trajectory of the break-in fact. At the city council, so I'm going to ask Celia to share some additional information about the work that's been occurring so far. G B A is already working on. Unfortunately, we don't have time. Back of all details. They call. They all three parts. Of course, parents, one of the practices of the best. That to kind of track. Lots, and then it's. Then they're going to do a bid also, and sweep. Look at what we can do. Push. Have. In the steering. Prove it. That. So, they're in the process of design. Have three contracts. Give us this, and then hopefully get. They already have all utilities. You don't need. Through the channel.
Any questions for Celia? Yes, Hillary, and then Ken?
I'm curious in terms of, you know, future planning for. Is there anything that's going to be expressed in this budget process?
So. And. We have. Started. In part. It's all ready. So they have. Water hole, providing the channel. We also have an interest in working, so. Like the following. They. Spend. Then they would, if it has to the ownership committee and. We have that. Have the points, just. Yeah, that, and that. So, that's our plan right now, so hopefully. G B A started in the second. We have money now, let's get. Just a reminder that this project was actually budgeted, so design was budgeted this year at fifty thousand dollars. Design is forty, so there's some savings there, and then one point, the five thousand dollars. For construction in this, and then the next section of that same channel is included in the current five-year schedule. So, I would imagine that mistake in could potentially accelerate the permitting on some of those things, and we'll be.
All right, Ken?
Celia, on the sewer line, is this a water wastewater line, or is it a private sewer line? And what's their contingency if that does fail?
A leak out into the creek, you know, we would call them an emergency and get someone out there right away to try to fix it. There is concrete over it, so hopefully that protects it enough if something happens.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Celia? I would entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move that the city council approve the resolution ratifying the emergency expenditure with G B A for design repairs to the retaining wall on Rock, Rock Creek Channel, approximately a hundred and fifty feet west of Reed's Road, in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Emily, please call for the roll.
Boltinghouse?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Inman?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Chosey?
Aye.
Reiner?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries?
All right, thank you. Thanks, Celia.
Thank you.
We'll cross our fingers.
Yeah.
Our second new business item tonight is the selection of chairs and vice chairs for our council committees. We'll start with our Community Development Committee and first vote on the chairperson, followed by the vice chairperson. We will then do the same for the Finance and Administration Committee. So I would now open the floor for nominations for Community Development Committee Chair. We will take all nominations at this time, and then each would be seconded. Yes, Ken?
Mayor?
Oh.
Mayor, I would move that the city council approve the appointment of Hillary Thomas as Chair of the Community Development.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further nominations for CDC Chair?
Mayor, I move the city council approve the appointment of Ben Chovsey as Chair of the. I move the City Council approve the appointment of Ben Chosey as Chair of the Community Development Committee. If he will so have it, as I would like to not have it.
Alright.
My offer, Ben.
I won't object. Thank you.
I guess I withdraw my motion.
Okay, so yeah, do we have a second for Ben?
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second for Ben. Ken, you have withdrawn the nomination for Hillary. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I appreciate it, Ken.
With the permit, seconding permission granted to withdraw that nomination. Okay. So we now have one nomination on the floor. Any further nominations for CDC Chair? Seeing none. Emily, can you call the roll?
Thomas?
Oh, after the nomination? Yep, this time, yeah, now you're confused. Before it was me. Alright, we have the motion, motion and a second. Emily, will you please call the roll?
Thomas?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Chosey?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Inman?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Reither?
Aye.
Boltinghouse?
Aye.
And I, I did skip a step. Ben, do you have any comments? On your.
I think we've.
On your chairmanship?
I'm, I'm happy to, happy to serve. Thank you.
Alright. We will now, thanks, Ben. We will now take nominations for CDC Vice Chair. Same process.
Let me try this one.
Yes, Ken?
Mayor, I move that the City Council approve the appointment of Leah Loudon as Vice Chair of the Community Development Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other nominations for Vice Chair? Seeing none. Leah, do you have any comments and do you accept the nomination?
I accept.
Any, any other comments or?
No.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Emily, please call for the roll.
Reither?
Aye.
Boltinghouse?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Inman?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Chosey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alright, congratulations, Ben and Leah. Now we will move on to Finance and Administration. Are there nominations for Finance and Administration Committee Chair?
Am I going to get in trouble for this one?
Try it again, Ken.
Mayor, I move that the City Council approve the appointment of Trent Boltinghouse as Chair of the Finance and Administration Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further nominations for FNA Chair? Alright, seeing none. Would the nominee like to make any comments?
I accept and thank you for the nomination.
Alright, any further comments from council? Seeing none. Emily, please call for the roll.
Crane?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Reither?
Aye.
Chosey?
Aye.
Boltinghouse?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Inman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alright, we will now take nominations for Finance and Administration Committee Vice Chair.
Mayor, I move that the City Council approve the appointment of Debbie Crane as Vice Chair of the Finance Administration Committee.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Any further nominations for FNA Vice Chair? Seeing none. Debbie, would you like to make any comments?
I accept and I look forward to working with Trent.
Alright, any further comments from council? Seeing none. Emily, please call the roll.
Chosey?
Aye.
Boltinghouse?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Inman? Crane?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Reither?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alright, congratulations to our new committee chairs and vice, vice chairs, and we've got a lot coming at us this summer, so get ready. Uh, next, the, no, there being no further business, business items for consideration, we'll move into comments from the City Council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone on the council have anything they'd like to share? Yes, Leah, then Ken?
Okay, um, Mary and I are announcing a Ward Two meeting on June 6th, 7 o'clock in Anderson Park Shelter One. So if you're interested in, in talking about Ward Two business with us, we'll be there with refreshments.
Alright, great. Yes, Ken?
I just wanted to say kudos to Public Works and the contractor, Miles Escavation, for the work they've been doing on 62nd Terrace. It is a major surgical process with the full-depth reconstruction of the section between Lamar and Woodson, and they're doing a fine job. And also, I know that it's a messy situation. It's kind of hard to avoid, but the citizens are very pleased with the project and how it's going. So thank you very much, Celia. And extend that to your staff, please.
Yes, Trent?
Thank you. I just wanted to give a public thank you to The Corner Lalo's Kitchen for hosting our Ward One meeting last week with Hillary and I. It was well received. I think a lot of people stumbled on it for the first time, enjoyed the food, and he was a very gracious host and had a nice spot set up for us outside. So I'd just like to thank him for that, and it was nice to establish a partnership with the business and, in the ward itself. So that's all I wanted to say.
Yes, Ben?
I just wanted to pile some more praise on the Public Works Department. I know there's been a lot going on, both expected and unexpected, and they've been very responsive to a host of smaller things that I've brought up and obviously the bigger things that we've all been talking about tonight. So thank you.
Alright, next we have our Council Committee Liaison Reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the various activities of the boards, commissions, and committees. First will be council members Crane and Thomas for the Sustainability Commission.
You go first. I've got a lot.
Well, we were able to meet at City Hall for the first time, right? That was the last meet, yeah, yeah. Were able to meet back together at City Hall for the first time in quite some time, so that was really nice for the Sustainability Commission to get back together. Really, a lot of the attention is still, and interest is on the Climate Action Task Force and putting some energies towards what they would like to see moved forward as recommendations for those of us that are on the task force. So we were able to take that, and I'm sure Debbie will hit on some of the other items.
This is kind of a blend between sustainability and just the council as a whole. I sit on the Johnson County Solid Waste Commission, and we had a meeting this month, and the keynote speaker was a man by the name of Michael Adams. Michael Adams owns Adams Cable Equipment. I'm not here to advocate for his business, but I am here to give you some insight into what a great opportunity we have collectively as a community and throughout Johnson County. Adams Cable Equipment is one of a handful of companies in North America that actually takes all hardware from monitors to phones to every kind of computer equipment. There's a group of them, there's 38 employees that break it down and the other refurbish it. So instead of all these pieces going into your local landfills, they're actually being reused. He also does extraction of copper and other metals. They are key in their recycling of hardware. They also are noted as an industry leader in carbon reduction. And when I was there, I asked him several questions, and I did ask if there was a possibility of having a tour, because I think it's fascinating that we have, and this, this is located at 9700 Widmore in Lenexa. We're lucky to have some company that represents our sustainability understanding and our practices, and I think it's a great opportunity for us. Like I said, I'm not advocating for his business per se as much as I am. I'm going to bring this up at the Sustainability Commission, and I'm going to ask him, my husband wants to go on a tour because he's got a computer business, but it's fascinating to see what we can do with those types of hardware, equipment, phones, everything electronic, instead of putting them in landfills. So if anybody's interested, I will bring this up at Sustainability to see if they can give them a tour. But if anybody's interested in going on a tour, let me know. Thanks.
Mayor, I just have one more thing I wanted to share. The Sustainability Commission has really robust subcommittees that focus on smaller projects, and they're really honing in on their communication efforts right now. So if you have any sustainability-type things that you think should be shared or the Sustainability Commission would be interested in it, pass that on to Andy Highland. And then also I wanted to highlight that Terry Baugh is helping put together a Sustainability Fair this September, and she is looking for sponsors and vendors and all of that, and that'll be here at the community center. And I think she's got like 100 people or 100 participating booths so far or something crazy. So that'll be a lot of fun.
Great. Next are council members Loudon and Reither for the Parks, Recreation and Tree Commission.
Yeah, PRT and Penn have been busy. So initially, let me, I guess, preface this with the feasibility study is, is ongoing, and there's a survey that's been posted on Facebook for residents and residents to take about Powell, so please give that a look, send it out to your residents. Up next, the Mohawk bid has finally been posted. Those bids, they're accepting bids through May 26th. There's at least five contractors that are interested, so that's a really good turnout, really good number that at least attended the first vendor meeting where they kind of had questions and discussed things. The tennis court is on pace and on budget to be done by June 1st. And hopefully there will be a ribbon cutting ceremony. I know we'll hear more about that as well, so be great if we could show up as there's been so much going on in parks, and it's good to highlight that. MFAK is starting it on June 15th, a lunch lap swim. So if you want to go get some laps in over your lunch hour, go ahead, head down there. And then the porta potty and waterworks has also been moved from the street kind of further back into the park, which is great. Yeah, PRT spent the rest of the time kind of discussing what they want to recommend to us on council for the sales tax piece, and I'm sure we'll hear more about that, but yeah, that's it. They've been busy.
I attended the, the community meeting last week that went over the different visions for all of the different parks. I think it was very well attended. Lots of people came and gave some good feedback, and I know Penn is, is working on putting that all together in a brief so that we can see some of the ideas.
Great, thank you. Uh, next is Councilmember Boltinghouse with an update on the Mission Magazine Editorial Board.
Yes, thank you. I continue to enjoy serving on this editorial board. The previous meeting we met last week, we focused a lot of time on the current edition that should be hitting mailboxes shortly. It's a lot bigger edition than normal, so a lot of good content in there. All of us on council at some point will be getting profiled if you haven't already, so keep an eye out for that too with the first two rollouts of council profiles in this edition. The next edition will have a baseball theme, so that would be timely considering the ongoing baseball season underway. And the, uh, we also entertained some story ideas, and I don't want to jump too far ahead into those, but I would say it's probably always a welcome addition if you do have somebody that you think is worth highlighting or a story that has a nice, interesting local angle. That's usually something that I think the group is receptive to.
Great, thank you. Lastly is Councilmember Chosey with the Family Adoption Committee.
Mayor, we don't have any updates for the Family Adoption Committee. We look forward to starting those meetings in the second half.
Great, thank you. Next is my report, which the climate, I would like to report that the Climate Action Plan Task Force recently had its first meeting, which I was able to attend. It's a dynamic group, and I really look forward to following their work and recommendations in the coming weeks and months, and we'll let Emily come up and share some additional information regarding the task force first meeting and next steps.
Thank you, Mayor, I think. So we did have a meeting in person, and as I think most know, we have representation from council, and we enjoyed having the mayor at our first meeting as well as our board and commissions, and then the different departments of the city. And so we tackled the Climate Action KC municipal policy recommendations, kind of a platform that local governments can dig into and evaluate, and we were not quite sure of the timing or flow, but we do agree. It was a great process, really nice to dig in. We kind of discussed the first grouping of recommendations that focused specifically on energy use and energy modifications. And there was just a lot of crossover, a lot of really robust discussion. So right now, my task is to synthesize that. We're sticking to the idea and principal goal of having some very clear recommendations for this budget process, kind of took, taking that first pass look at probably 18 months. So the remainder of 2022, what actions can we still accomplish within this calendar year and this fiscal year, and then what we would want to see happen in 2023? So our next meeting is tomorrow at noon, and the, uh, I think it's a little bit, it's coming right at us, but I think we all agreed that the process was a good one and was valuable. That discussion and education of the members of the task force was worthwhile, so I think we'll maybe experiment with that a bit, and maybe we'll amend our meeting schedule somewhat so that we can continue at this pace, but also have something to contribute to the budget process.
Great, so the plan is to have the full group keep going with the process for now and see how it goes?
I think so. Councilmember Chosey is nodding at me, and that's at least one of our members, so I think so.
Good science, alright.
Thank you.
Great. Let's see, next up we have our City Administrators Report. Laura, do you have anything you'd like to share with council slash are you able to share this evening?
I will try. If you have any questions on the April interim financials, just let me know. I'm not going to review those in, in any detail. Just a couple of reminders on a few other things. We do have a work session scheduled for next Wednesday, the 25th at 6:30 PM. It's our second work session on the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax Renewal as we move that forward for determination of final ballot language by June 15th. I know several of you will be absent, but just a reminder that that's going to occur. Councilmember Reither did talk about the tennis courts. Our plan right now is to do a ribbon cutting probably at about 5:45 on June 1st, ahead of our council committee meetings. We'll confirm that. We thought it would be fun to meet over there and cut the ribbon and celebrate that, and then come over here for our June 1st committee meetings. And then the day after our June 1st committee meetings, the Mission Market kicks off for the 2022 season. So that's really exciting. I think everybody's looking forward to that. Councilmember Reither also mentioned the survey, which just went live today. So if, I think most of you talked and did a phone interview with, with some of the consultants. If there are some different questions on this survey form, so if you are interested, please, I'll send that link out tomorrow as well, but it's, it was in the Mission Monthly that, excuse me, went out before this meeting, and is available on social media. And then I know the chief sent an email to you all earlier this week about a new complaint complement form and process that has been launched on our website, and that's now live, and we will, I think, did you send your press release out today? Sent a press release out on that. But it, we're excited to, it aligns with, there was an article several months ago from an advocacy group in the county. And I know the chief has been working really hard to get that set up, so that's all I have.
Alright, thank you, Laura, and we do have need for an executive session this evening, which will be a consultation on privileged communication. The governing body and those individuals named in the motion will adjourn to executive session for the allotted time. When that time has expired, the governing body will reconvene to do one of the following. One, extend the time required for discussion and return to executive session, or two, continue with our regular legislative meeting. As a reminder to the public, the governing body may take no binding action in an executive session. I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that the City Council recess to executive session under KSA 754319B2. Consultation with attorney on matters deemed privileged. Also attending the meeting will be the City Administrator Laura Smith, City Attorney David Martin, Chief of Police Dan Madden, and Assistant City Administrator Emily Randall. And the meeting will resume at, let's see. Will, will resume at 8:37. 30 minutes from now.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Emily, will you please call the roll?
Boltinghouse?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Inman?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Chosey?
Aye.
Reither?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alright, the council will now convene to executive session, and we'll return to the regular meeting at 8:37 PM, 30 minutes from now.
Same form as before?
Yes, but okay, it is eight thirty seven and we will resume our regular council meeting. I would entertain a motion.
May I remove the city council recess to executive session under KSA seventy five dash four thirteen B two consultation with attorney on matters deemed privileged. Also attending the meeting will be city administrator Laura Smith, city attorney Dave Martin, chief of police Dan Madden, and assistant city administrator Emily Randall. The open meeting will resume at eight fifty three PM in fifteen minutes.
Second, may I please call the roll? Inman?
Aye.
Tozey?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Boating House?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Reherd?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, it is 8:54 and we are back from our executive session. Before we adjourn tonight, I want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.